Dear God, we seek blessings on the tasks before us tonight. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nefer.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move to amend tonight's agenda to include ordinance 168-13.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda to include ordinance 168-13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Consent calendar.
Uh...
Ms. Townsend.
Hello. Mr. President, I move that item B on the consent calendar be received and approved and filed and received, and item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From Chief, from the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2013 budget amendments.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin. I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From Chief Teppin regarding the request for appointment process.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation for a change order with MWH Americas, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation from McDonald Street Combined Sewer Repair.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Mental Health and Recovery Services Board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose city surplus through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to execute an LPA agreement with ODOT.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to accept Chase Bank property donation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place property maintenance tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number nine be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number ten.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number ten be received and filed.
Second.
And legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next we have reports of officials. Major Cortez for the Lima Police Department 2012 Annual Report.
I'll pass these out. It's got a little flyer in the back. This tutorial that we're having. This is a guy who has not just no copies, but he's been very happy to provide them. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to present this to you. Once again this year, it was an effort between Administrative Services and input from all the shifts and divisions that helped put this report together. 2012 marked a very special year for the Lima Police Department. We celebrated our 125th anniversary, serving our community. We had the main part of the celebration on May 1st at the Allen County Museum, and we displayed some historic articles, videos, photos. We had a laser shot demo and cake and ice cream for all the kids. And what was interesting, that while we were trying to put this together and looking back at the Lima's history, we did this 25 years ago. And we didn't dig this up, but while we were putting this together, we made a discovery that had been overlooked for decades. Going back to 1891, the City of Lima hired William A. Jackson as a patrolman for the Lima Police Department. He worked for the department for four years, left the profession, and then returned back in 1898. He retired in 1910. Although that doesn't seem very special, it should be noted that Mr. Williams was the first African-American police officer hired in the state of Ohio, and only the second officer, black officer, to be hired in the United States of America. Missing in the mark by only a few months, New York had the first officer. This intrigued us, so we dug a little deeper to try to find where he was buried, and we found out that he was buried at Woodlawn Cemetery. And when we found his gravesite, we discovered that there was, never had been a tombstone at his gravesite. So with donations from the Tri-State Gun Collectors and Jones Clark Funeral Home, Officer William Jackson now has a custom headstone at Woodlawn Cemetery, and you'll find a picture of it on the last page of that report. It shows his photo along with his badge, number one, which was issued to the most senior police officer. The gravesite is located on the southwest corner of the cemetery. Throughout the report, once you start reading it, I have made a special effort to highlight our officers' accomplishments for 2012, your officers. I also took the effort to insert some stories from way back when the police department first started, and just to compare some differences from now and 125 years ago, when we first started. And those stories were taken from a book that was published in 1909 on the history of the Lima Police Department. I think you'll notice that even though a great deal of time has passed, and certainly technology has changed the practice of policing, working with the community to resolve issues has certainly remained the same. As you read through the pages of this report, I also thought that it was important to let you and the residents of this community know about the outstanding work that our officers have done throughout the year. Officers were commended for life-saving catching burglars and murders, and up to counseling the youth whose parents have all but given up on. These things we often take for granted, myself included, but this is the job that these officers signed up for, the job they love, and the job they do every day because it's the right thing to do. When you are acknowledged for the things you do, it's very special, no matter where it comes from, and sometimes it'll come from the least likely people. If you'll notice on page five, there's an example of a poem written by a young 11-year-old Maria Taylor, sixth grader from the Lima City Schools. She delivered that poem to the Chief of Police, who shared it with the police department. And after she brought that poem, we invited her to the police department and gave her a tour of the facility and just showed her around, and she really, really enjoyed that. In 2012, we had five longtime officers retire from the force: Major Shade, Lieutenant Albright, Detectives Claimant Merrick, and ID Officer Whitney. Two additional officers resigned to take jobs in the private sector. We did, however, hire four patrolmen, one record clerk, and one communications operator, and we are still in the process of looking for more good qualified individuals, and that's what that flyer is that I passed out. We were happy that two officers that were deployed in Afghanistan returned to us safely, Sergeant Green and Patrolman Engelmann, and we still have one officer on military duty. And despite all the retirements, new hires, and promotions, officers of the LPD continue to deliver excellent service to Lima community. Calls for service are broken down by ward, starting on page 22, when you get a chance to look at that. And if anyone needs anything broken down more specific, do not hesitate to ask, I'll provide that to you as quickly as possible. But in short, as far as it comes to the statistics, I'm happy to report that even with the increase of calls for service from 43,251 to 45,122, crimes were down 2.2 percent, which may not seem like a lot, but it is. We'll make a copy of this report available online, the City Lima's website, and if anyone desires any more hard copies, please don't hesitate to ask. Do we have any questions?
Next, under Reports of Officials, is Steve Cleves regarding the reverse auction results for electricity contract.
We conducted an auction for the use of the city's electric power in July, and the results of the auction are that the city received a low bid from a company called Energy.me, and it's going to result in the city saving $560,000 in power bills as compared to our current rate over the next three years. That savings will primarily be in the utilities area. In the utilities area, they have a heavy power usage for some very large pumps that they use at the reservoirs. With those pumps in that area, and utilities taking 80% of the savings, 20% will be in the general fund of the $560,000. That amounts to, on an annual basis, a little over $130,000 a year in savings for utilities, and a little over $30,000 a year in the general fund. It was a very interesting process to follow. I think if you go to the third page of the handout, the company that we used to organize this auction was called E-Mex, and on the back page of that E-Mex first sheet, you can see the bid results and the companies which did bid. Besides Energy.me, which won the bid, EP was also a bidder, as was First Energy and Direct Energy. There were two other bidders also involved, but Energy.me was the low bidder, both for a carry-through period from September through next March. We had our current contracts expiring on two different dates. We had, some of our power contracts were expiring in September and some were expiring in March. So we carried those contracts, which expired in September, on a short-term, six-month contract to March, and then we had one large bid auction for the period starting in March for three years. And in total, for those two periods, is how the savings are calculated, at some $560,000.
The next, ordinance 142-13.
This is a third reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sperry Yanni.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 142-13 be passed on its third reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 142-13 on its third reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
No.
Ordinance 142-13 has been passed on its third reading by a six to two vote. Ordinance 159-13.
Levine Special Assessments for Property Maintenance Co-Charges on Premises in the City of Lima.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 159-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 159-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 159-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 160-13.
Amending the 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin. I move that ordinance 160-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 160-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 160-13 has been passed on its first reading. Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 160-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 160-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 162-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Human Supply Inc. for the demolition of four structures.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 162-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 162-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 162-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 163-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ASC Group Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 163-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 163-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
If I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro. Since this involves the Kibbe Street reconstruction, what other steps? One, how long will this step take, and what other anticipated steps lie ahead for this? Because I think it's on the calendar for 2015, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Elstro.
What you have before you tonight will allow us to do necessary work preceding the actual design phase. This step is what they call categorical exclusions. They need to look at the scope of the project, the beginning points, where we plan to improve, and to see if there's anything that would fundamentally be in conflict with federal highway funding-type projects. That will occur here shortly. After that, this study will actually tell us if there's any additional right-of-way that would have to be purchased, which we do not expect that it will. Kibbe Street is a fairly defined street already. What this work consists of is digging up the complete street, rebuilding the base at an appropriate depth, so that we can get positive drainage from people's front lawns, the sidewalks, curbs, gutters, et cetera. So we have done the preliminary survey. We don't anticipate we need any significant right-of-way, and the balance of this year, this winter, will be in the design phase, and then the project will be packaged and sold. So there is more environmental work to be done beyond, there could be some more environmental studies done beyond the categorical exclusions, so this is the first step. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elstro.
Mr. Elstro and Ms. Adams, when is, is 2015 the date tentatively scheduled for the reconstruction, or?
I'm not, I hesitate to speak publicly on that, since I don't have a note to that effect at this point in time. I believe it will not be any sooner than 2015.
Do we anticipate the I-75 work will all be done before this commences?
Well, it depends on which portion of the I-75 work you just talked about. The Harding Highway work will be complete, and this current phase of the I-75 should be complete by then, but you need to understand, the next phase of the I-75 work will begin immediately following next year. So 2014, in 2015 and 2016, ODOT will still be reconstructing the interstate. However, it'll be a point southward of where they are now. It'll be from Forest Street all the way down to Creatorsville.
Will the traffic concerns be alleviated before they start on that and before we start on Kibbe?
This portion, yes.
Okay.
This portion of the interstate, and definitely the Harding Highway work will be complete. Harding Highway will be complete yet a year in advance of this Kibbe Street reconstruction.
There's just a lot of concern about Kibbe Street being reconstructed and overlapping, because there are a lot of places, both business and residential, frankly, that are impacted by the traffic congestion, where every day it's the Allen County Fair Day on Belle Fountain Avenue.
Correct. Mr. Nefer actually referenced that between pre-council and this meeting about the concerns of the businesses. Those in the Harding Highway obviously have really suffered during this period of construction, and as we move forward on Kibbe Street, that will significantly be an inconvenience on those businesses. As we tell local customers, try to make your way, because those businesses do need to sustain their business even during those days of construction. Now, as we construct, we will make sure that there is access to all of those businesses that work in that area, but trying to get to there won't necessarily be the most convenient as it is. In the after, however, it should be a very nice addition to one of the main thoroughfares of our community, and I think it'll be, I know it will be improvements that residents, as well as businesses, are looking forward to. There's just not sufficient drainage along the Kibbe Street thoroughfare, and there is no way to ameliorate that without major reconstruction.
And no, I don't think anybody is arguing the need, just the timing.
Yeah.
Concerns over the timing.
Understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 163-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 164-13.
Authorizing directing the authority to pay Altera, Inc. for emergency repairs to the collapsed McDonald Street Combined Sewer.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 164-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 164-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 164-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 165-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction traffic controller cabinets and a shop air compressor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 166-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 166-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 165-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 166-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction traffic controller cabinets and a shop air compressor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 166-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 167-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 16713 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 16713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 16713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 16813.
Authorizing the mayor to purchase and accept a parcel of property into Lima Land Bank to pursuant to ordinance 14305.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 16813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 16813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 16813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Selenius Business. You voted no?
Oh, I thought you voted no.
Yes.
I can't hear you.
They just assume. So, we're clear, right?
Yes.
Ms. Selenius Business, Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, the HR committee meeting is next Monday, August 26th at 5:30. There were some different times and dates out there, but this is the final. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Nieper?
Yeah, just prior to our next meeting, I believe, all the schools in the area will be in session. I know certainly in the first ward, we have three elementary schools and a lot of walkers. A lot of kids that walk to those. And while they, I'm sure, try their hardest to stay on the sidewalks, they're not always successful. So, just for those out there driving around, keep in mind that school is back in session and keep an eye out for children as you're driving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nieper. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick notes. I'm sure everyone's heard about the Allen County Fairs, so get out and enjoy yourself a little bit. It's one of the largest fairs in the state of Ohio and it definitely has some very nice venues to see, so. The other is the Northside Neighborhood Association will hold its meeting tomorrow. The location has changed. They moved us into the cafeteria because they made a new classroom out of the room that we were using. So, it'll be in the cafeteria at 7:00 PM at St. Gerard's Cafeteria. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin? Two items this evening. I would like to refer the issue of a claim by Sean Carpenter that was due to a sewer failure and the related work in front of his property in the front of his property and just adjacent to his property to the Utilities Committee for Review as a moral obligation. So, the motion in the second is to refer the issue of a basement flood due to a sewer failure? No, it wasn't a basement flood. It was a sewer failure and the associated work that was performed. As stated by Counselor Tevin to the Utilities Committee for Review. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. The second item I have, I'd like to refer to the Finance Committee the issue of the resources required to support the actions that were taken by the Community Economic Development Committee relative to junk autos for review by the Finance Committee for funding.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue as stated by Counselor Tevin to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things this evening. I'm happy to announce that Hope Neighborhood Association will be starting up again because they meet at Unity School. And with school starting, they will be starting to meet now, between now and wintertime. They meet, will meet next, or on Tuesday, September 3rd at 6:30 at Unity School. And we've not been meeting for the last two or three months and I look forward to seeing everyone there. I've had discussions with the Humane Society in the past couple of weeks. I've attended training on this trap neuter and release program that the city gave them $10,000 towards. I've had discussions with the director. My best understanding right now is they were going to do a pilot program, I believe in Ms. Townsend's ward. And then they were hoping to be here this evening to give us a report on tweaking it or, you know, where they fell short or need improvements as they get ready to gear up to go to other wards where they've got more numerous calls. I'll try and get in touch with them between now and our next council meeting, which isn't until September 9th. But I hope that we will get a report from them concerning the activity up till now. I think they were hoping to start sooner. I know I was, as others here at the table were. And residents are getting a little frustrated too because they've been good about calling them, calling me, and I'm forwarding the information. And they just want to see some action done. And then also, Lacknip will be holding another chicken barbecue fundraiser, September 2nd from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That is Labor Day. Pre-tickets, pre-sale is $8. That's up until August 26th. After that, it will be $9. Contact person will be the President, Neil Lester, at 419-302-4166. Or I'm sure you can call Connie Dersham, the Neighborhood Specialist. And again, they will be held distributing the dinners out of the Lacknip Resource Center on 1440 West Spring Street. And finally, along with the police report, we were given a flyer. And I asked Counselor Glenn if he wanted to report on it and I think he asked me to as well. And I'm happy to do so. There's going to be an opportunity to learn, the opportunities of becoming a Lima police officer. They'll be discussing the requirements, the hiring process, and the benefits. And this will be at the Cheryl Allen Center at 1802 South Central Street. There's two dates, Tuesday, August 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then again, Tuesday, September 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And for more information, you can call Major Cortez at 419-221-5268 or Major Protsman at 419-221-5266. And appreciate you using that center to reach the residents and get the information out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, a couple of things here. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Adams. And that is great. And I'm hoping that a lot of people attend and we'll get it out there and talk to a lot of folks about it and get to some of the churches and also contact folks in other areas if they want to come out and get to know about the Lima Police Department. Exciting there. First of all, I want to thank the folks that got out there and stayed out until 1:00 in the morning. We found out that the fair was coming. I mean, the parade, Allen County Parade was coming. Around the area needed to be cleaned up a little bit. And they don't want to give no names. This came out, who was out there till 1:00 in the morning, getting to clean up around there because we had a lot of folks visiting the area, never been in the area, some have been there. And we got to clean up around the Atlantic area a little bit. Thank you guys so much for taking your hometown pride and your neighborhood. When Julie called me and said, "Derry, you know the parade is coming in this area. We've got a lot of work to do around here." I said, "Julie, I'll be there." And then we started at 8:00. And we got some bags, we got to clean up around there so we can welcome our guests to the area, you know? And we can get the trees away, but we made a way, made it look a lot decent in the day. Look, thank you guys so much. Also, Shore Island is having a fundraiser on 29th at Happy Pizza. Be buy a dollar slice pizza, start from 12 noon all the way running 9:00. So, if anybody wants to support, just buy one dollar pizza and it's going to go to our after-school program, which we continue having that. Really nice on that. Also, we, Whirl Park Neighborhood had the night out. It was very, very consistent and I appreciate them with all the hard work they do with a small amount of people. And they had an opportunity to have a memorial service for Benita Haines. That was the day she passed away. And it was a proclamation on August 6th will be Benita Haines' Day. And that was given by the mayor a long time ago. And her mother came down from Columbus. She was very happy to come down and for a memorial service for her. So, we appreciate Ms. Haines for coming down and her sisters all enjoying themselves. And I think the Whirl Park Neighborhood Association was showing them a welcome. Also, we don't thank enough, some more people for helping us out, painting a garage for an elderly lady. Thank you guys so much. And that's what I want to see, a lot more of that. Let's continue doing it, helping folks out. She got a letter in the mail, says we can't waive the $50, but we got the work done. We can't waive the $50, but the work got done. And that's when neighbors helping neighbors. And that's where the 6th Ward will be very, very successful when we continue working hard at it, making sure our neighbor's house, any code enforcement, we're working on that. And I'm so happy when you see the young kids coming out helping. You know, I'm very, very happy. My voice is about gone because it's been the whole weekend. We've been trying to get things together and continue keeping that tradition, keeping things up to date, you know? To value our homes. We're looking at a lot of good things there, you know? We want to continue keeping things going. And that's what we got to continue doing at that. The kids are going to school tomorrow, like Mr. Nieper said. Very important. I will be out and about. We still got some school supplies left over that we got some donating. Any kid that needing book bags, we got some book bags left. I will be handing out to the kids. I will meet at all the schools, trying to get to all of them. But I will start at south and work my way down and work my way up and welcome the kids back to school, you know? And I know they're going back a little early this year. But very, very important that we get, you know, get involved with our kids and we'll see the parents, parents take the kids out, welcome to school that day, you know? And if you can go to lunch with them, you can. But I will get an opportunity to go to lunch with them tomorrow and get to meet some of our kids in the neighborhood that been doing a good job on there. Also, we are working on bringing Archie Griffin to the Shore Island Center and I'm very happy about that. We will have a date for that day. We have a young eighth grader who will be receiving a scholarship from the Shore Island Community Center when he get ready to go to Ohio State. So, we got that good news last week and we got good news that Archie is going to be coming. So, we working on a date. You guys will see it. We hoping everybody get to come out. We're going to recognize a lot of good folks that have been helping out in the neighborhood when Archie is here. So, come out to that and I'm hoping the date will be, we already know it will be in September. So, we hoping that he come out and he'll sign autographs and bring everybody, come on out and enjoy yourself. Also, we are working on, back on the paint program, but we won't be able to get the paint out to next year. We made it this year, but next year, I'm working out details right now. I know a lot of folks have been calling me about that. We just didn't get it this year. But next year, I will get it because I'm getting all the details together, how we going to go about doing it, how we going to distribute it. But a lot of folks need that to continue upkeep their homes. And I love it when people call and say they need the help. They want to make a difference in their neighborhood. And that just excites me so much that we're going to do that. We got a lot of good folks coming aboard, you know? And, you know, Ms. Dillard just came from system, moved back to town. She want to help out and do different things. Excited about doing things in the area. And that's why I want to say a lot of people. Let's just don't sit back and watch and complain when you get the letter in the mail. Let's roll our sleeves up and let's do it. We're going to get it done. Again, I cannot waive that $50. That's the rule. But we can catch it before we get the $50. We can be ready to go. But we're not going to gripe about it. Let's get it done and need any help. We're going to get some good folks coming around now, want to help out and do the details need to be done. And Stan, I appreciate what you've done in the alleys, Public Works. Did an excellent job on some of the alleys there. They went out and rocked the alleys. I know some of the people said they was complaining about it, but Saul went out, got them taken care and I appreciate that. Again, the county fair is going on. Let's go out there, have fun, you know? And I know a lot of kids want to get out there. Some of the kids cannot afford it, but we're going to try to work a way to get you guys out there. I got about 40 kids' names that want to go, but we'll make a way to get the kids out there and get them out to the fair. Some kids never been to the fair before because of expenses, they couldn't afford it. I want to thank Ms. Nieper's wife for helping out, pass out school supplies. Ms. Nieper came out there, thank her so much that we have so many kids out there and she helped us out. And all the other volunteers that came from other sides of the town and came out from townships and all that. And again, we had a young lady from Bath Township that was in the parade. She had said, "Mr. Glenn, if you need any of our service, you need anything, our group will come out and help you." And I appreciate them so much. So, we got our opportunity to meet some good friends, good neighbors from the township. And I'm so happy about that because it just made me feel so good when I was out there making sure that Atlantic Street was okay and all that. And they came up saying we want to do projects in the wintertime too. If you got any project. And I don't know her name, but she wrote it down for me. But I appreciate her and her group. I don't know the group name, but I will get the group name and they want to help out with any project that Lima have. And we had a great discussion about Lima is our center of attention. That's where they come from everything. That she want to raise her kid up in Lima. That's exciting when people talk that way, you know? And I'm like, yeah, you know? And she looked at some of the houses and how the houses going to be fixed. Just need a little cosmetic and the taxes in Lima. She brought up a lot of things and, I mean, we sat there and talked. I didn't have time to look at the parade rooms and they're talking about what can we do to change, arouse a lot of little details in the 6th Ward. And it's very exciting and that's what I like. And I had a couple of things about Sperry on there. We didn't get to meet. And Sperry on will be, we will be meeting. There's a couple of things that we need to talk about with Sperry on. We're dealing with a lot of folks that work in there. Had a meeting with a lot of folks over the years about different things we got to do, work on. I think it can be worked out. I think it's big enough to work out. I know it can be worked out, some of the things that we need to talk about. And that's the reason why I do not support the temp service thing because of some of the folks, well, I got at least 25% of the folks in the 6th Ward work temp service jobs. And them are some of the things we got to talk about. We just can't run away from these things. We try and get people employed. There's a lot of things that get employed about. So, there's a lot of sticky points in there that I think we can work them out. We can come to an agreement. We don't disagree and now we're not going to agree. But get to the point, and this is some of the people livelihood. This is what they pay their bills for. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm very, very concerned. Been concerned about it from day one since I walked on city council. So, now we're going to get at the table. We didn't get to meet today at all. We spoke and met at 4:30, but she had something to do. But we will meet in hour and hour so we can make sure that this bill win-win for the 6th Ward, City of Lima, and the county folks. But we need to sit down and talk and work out some of these sticky points that people need to have. And again, I'm excited about the Police Department doing some recruiting and I'm hoping that I can get some folks around the different areas to come into, you know? I hope we have a sell-out crowd there. We're going to put it out there. Like it's out there, let's come and grab, and get it and make it happen. And when I'm being a police officer. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. I have two items. Number one, Chief Martin, regarding the the meetings that are going to be held for the Police Department. What are the age restrictions on police officers? Is it 18 to start and is there a cap?
Mr. President, it is actually 21 is the minimum age and 34 is the maximum age.
34, okay. Thank you. Last item I have, second item, last item. I want to apologize for my role in the discussion that took place at the last council meeting.